Alright, Director O'Hare calls this meeting to order on nine four twenty twenty-five at five forty-five. Director Stickel here.
Director Saldivar here.
Director O'Hare here. Director Totten here.
She does, she's got music playing.
Teresa's online, but she's saying she can only hear music. Teresa, are you able to hear us? We see that you're muted, so I'm not sure if you can let us know that you're here so we can take real call. Okay, Teresa's online, but we keep losing her, so we're gonna go ahead and announce that we do have a quorum, and then as Teresa's able to log on, we'll get her back.
Moving on to our next agenda item is our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to our next agenda item is Commitment to Governing Excellence, Commitment to Governing Style. Do I have a reader?
I will take that. Commitment to Governing Style. As a reminder to the public and directors, the board will govern lawfully, observing policy governance principles with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal procedure, encouragement of diversity in viewpoints, strategic leadership more than administrative detail, clear distinction of board and chief executive roles, collective rather than individual decisions, future rather than past or present, and governing proactively rather than reactively. You want me to keep going?
Yeah, keep going.
Mission and vision statements. Mission statement, Bromley East Charter School empowers students to achieve academic excellence and leadership through critical thinking, reasoning, problem solving, and character development in a safe environment. Vision statement, Bromley East Charter School strives to become a preeminent charter school in the state of Colorado where all students realize their maximum intellectual, character, and leadership potential in a diverse and well-defined ethical environment.
Public comment period.
Noting that there is nobody in our audience today, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda. I do have one small change to this agenda, which is after our, after this was posted, there was a name change under our monitoring reports. It should be called, oh my gosh, Global Objectives, and not focus on just academic excellence. And then outside of that, there are no changes unless anybody else has other changes. Okay, with no changes, do I have a motion on the table to approve the Consent Agenda?
Director Saldivar will make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with those noted changes.
Director Stickel will second. And Cece, you're gonna have to take a verbal vote from me. I'm a yay. Alright, moving on to our next agenda item is
Governance Processes Supporting Our Global Objectives. The first objective here is just publicly signing our code of conduct, the confidentiality agreement, and ethical standards in our meeting protocols. You're welcome to just sign those throughout the meeting today, and then we'll move on to our next one, which is our Finance Committee summary.
Just a quick question, there hasn't been any changes from last year to this year on this?
No changes. The only form that we have added, because we should have had it this entire time, is the Board of Directors Conflict of Interest Statement. And normally, that's just in our board documents, but this came from Tim as just a formalization that if we have conflicts of interest, that there's a statement that says what we identify as conflicts.
Does Cece keep these for us, or does the school keep them?
So, they get uploaded to Board Docs, and then they're essentially, they live in Board Docs.
Do you want us to give them to Cece to upload them?
Um, I think Jen helped us out last time with uploading them to Board Docs, or maybe I did that.
I'm not sure, but Mel and I have a little project to work on for the homepage to make sure the time is correct, so, you know, we can absolutely scan those and try to figure out where they go. Ah.
It's all there.
Okay, let's. Okay, perfect. Let's, let's do it.
Okay, good times. Mark, did you have any other questions?
Nope, that was it, thank you.
Okay, and you're welcome if you don't want to sign them and you want time to read them, feel free to use time after this to, to do that. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item is our Finance Committee update. Yeah, Jen, would you mind? I am not able to get to anything right now.
Do not mind. Do you want me to go through this, or just hit the highlights?
Hit the highlights.
I know Bart, you're also... Do you want to do it? Cause I know you're on, maybe we could kill two birds with one stone, cause I know you're later in there too. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, look at us being efficient. Get it, Bart.
We have to, yeah, we just have to do it.
So you can, yeah, do...
Hello?
Hello?
Hey Bart.
So, yeah, but you could at least do the Finance Committee summary and then roll into the investment schedule, which are B and C.
Yeah.
So, we did meet recently, and we discussed finances for the period ending July thirty-first. In terms of what we covered in the meeting, we always cover check register. We'd like the board to be aware of all the checks that were written in the bio. In terms of the budget, budget stacking up nicely. We did recap a couple of metrics from the prior fiscal year. In terms of July financial, not a big reporting month. Why? Cause the majority of the expense is charged back to the prior fiscal year, teacher salaries and benefits, okay? In terms of interest for the month, nine thousand in interest earnings, and projected any fund balance, four point seven million for this fiscal year, FY twenty-six. Grants. In terms of grants, the only new grant that we haven't seen before coming up, I can't...
The only grant that is new that we really haven't seen historically is the Facilities Grant. And this year, it should come in around one sixty, last year was like one seventy-four. And then, here's the investment schedule. Do we want to hit that real quick? Okay, so the investment schedule is basically a summary of all our cash holdings, okay? Cash and investments. And you can see here, a lot of our stuff is liquid. And the reason why we had a lot of money in our checking account, which is unusual, is because we were positioning ourselves for the refi. And we had to wire out a lot of money, four point two million, to UMB to pay down our debt. And principal amount was like four million, forty-five thousand, and a little bit of interest as well as closing fees. Okay, and then in terms of Cola Trust, that's, I have some interest rates over here, and I think that was running about four point four percent. And then if you want to scroll up, these are holdings in our Schwab account. We have some T-bills, and we have some agency bonds of the federal government. So, agencies of the federal government, there's an implied guarantee in terms of security. And so, with regard to these maturities, you can see that there are various maturities, but they have calls, meaning that they can be called prior to maturity. It's always a good idea for the Board of Directors to review our long-term securities and sign off on those, just so that you're aware of the actual investment, and that you agree to the type of position that it is and the term, okay? We do have a very comprehensive investment policy contained in our financial policies and procedures. And so, it's always a good idea to make sure that that policy in our financial policies and procedures is in alignment with state statute, and it is, okay? So these, all these investments are in line with state statute in terms of eligibility. And then we slide down here, and you can see our other additional holdings for CEC, okay? And we have money in C-Safe in terms of the core and the cash account, okay? They recently moved to a new platform, but in terms of the daily rate over here, it's running again about four point three percent. Alright, so all in all, those are the entirety of our investment holdings. And as you may be aware, we have to market, mark those securities to market at the end of each accounting period. So as interest rates fluctuate, we might have a small gain or loss because the value of those securities is tied to the interest rate environment. So, we have to book that on an ongoing basis, and that's always reflected in the monthly financial statements. Alright, that'll do it for the investment schedule. Any questions?
Okay.
I guess just one question. So, just to, you want to go back up to the top? The four point two, so that was, that went to the closing of the loan?
Yeah.
To pay down, okay.
The debt.
And so really, that ending balance is more like six something instead of the ten?
Actually, on a net-net basis, we had another seven hundred thousand coming in.
Okay.
And so, on a net-net, I think it came in at about three-five.
Perfect, thank you.
We had some money in a principal account that was ultimately rebated to us, okay? So yeah, so, and we'll get into our ending fund balance for the end of this fiscal year, but as I mentioned from the finance report, the finance summary, we're estimated to land the end of this year at about four point seven million. I think it's probably closer to four point five, but we have some new enrollment information, so it could theoretically be somewhere between those two numbers, four-five to a four-seven. Alright, so in terms of policies, obviously, it's always a good idea to revisit your policies and procedures on an annual basis to make sure they're up to, up to snuff. And then we're exploring some things. I think what's exciting here is we're moving some of our accounts payable function to an ACH sort of platform, more secure, more timely, and I would say that vendors are gonna be happier. So, it's a good thing. A lot of pluses. Alright, and then other than that, anything down here? Capital projects, still working on the playground, planning. And then, in terms of twenty-seven J monitoring report, they're still on Anvalar. I think we're up to speed there. I think the only thing is, is, you know, alignment when terms of their dates versus our dates. In terms of the annual audit, draft is due nine fifteen, final audit at nine thirty. District twenty-seven J has earlier dates, but our dates align with our contract, so. But I reached out to them, I don't think there's any issue there. There hasn't been in the past. And then, we're gonna hit the three D financial conditions here in a jiffy. Ten ninety-fives, that regulation is changing slightly. In terms of reporting, CEBT handles all that reporting for us, and so, it's a good thing. They provide a lot of great services. Any other questions on the finance summary? Okay.
Alright, Bart, and then we don't have you again until the monitoring reports.
Okay, cool.
Thank you so much.
Alright.
Alright, moving on to the Board Strategic Plan, this one I'm gonna pass over to Jen just to give a brief statement about our process and communicating back to our constituents.
Um, okay, well, everybody can hear me. Teresa and I worked with Jen and her team on getting the initial wording and communications out that went out to families, kind of sharing what the strategic plan is, why we're doing it. This is the lovely document, and I think there's one more that are on there. So this went out last week, or ten days ago, somewhere around that ballpark, right?
Yes.
Yes. So, we really wanted to make sure that we hit the highlights of what we are doing, and that it was easy to understand why we're doing this, and hopefully, our families found it engaging and something that they could follow and definitely understand what was going to happen. And so, as we continue on in this process, we'll just, Teresa and I, I think the plan is to work with Jen and her team on how this is all gonna unroll.
Do you want, do you have the other one?
Uh-huh, this one? Or the other one that you guys created?
Yeah, the other...
I can find that one.
Okay.
But I don't have it.
That's okay. There were two that were created. They were stunning. They will be taught in universities.
Love it. I think the biggest takeaway, would you agree, Jen, is that we look forward to the implementation of our, of this big overarching strategic plan and the consistent feedback from our community members, just to make sure that we continue to, to serve, serve the school and the community needs.
Yeah, that's, you know, a lot of the back and forth that went, was just making sure that the communication was clear, that it was easy to understand, easy to follow, you know, that it grabbed our families right away so that they could read it quickly and understand what we did all last year, and, you know, where it's gonna take us in the future.
Thank you. And with the strategic plan, the board's reviewing our global ends and our executive limitations to ensure that all of our policies align with our new strategic plan. So thank you.
You are very welcome.
Any thoughts, questions, comments, concerns on that agenda item?
I'd just be curious, Jen, if you've heard anything, any feedback from the community, positive or negative?
Um...
Either, Jen?
Yeah, I personally have not. Teresa, you can chime in or maybe text if you have. Jen, have you?
I've not. I mean, I will just say, just from my team's perspective and the work, I think that they're pretty excited to have this level of clarity at the school of what we're chasing and excited to bring that to life, so I would say people are appreciating the clarity of the vision.
And Teresa hasn't heard anything back either. I know we're having some technical difficulties there.
Perfect. I know it's early on, I was just curious, so. I hope that, yeah, like Darnell said, as we move into the middle and later part of the year, people maybe, you know, do have some of that feedback to help us out, but no news is good news.
Alright, thank you so much. Moving on to our next agenda item is the Informal ED Report. And this is Jen Shaver. She'll cover CMAS and School Performance Framework.
Are there really a cricket in here?
I think so.
It's cricket.
Like a live?
Crickets.
Or like a... Well, no, I do, but sometimes... That's nice.
Well, look at that.
Look at that, see?
That's great. Alright, well, I am just gonna provide a highlight, high, high-level overview of our CMAS results as well as our School Performance Framework results. Next month's monitoring report does talk about Global N-1A, which is our academic achievement, where we'll spend a little bit more time digging a little deeper, but definitely know that everyone is interested in seeing how we did, so I want to make sure that we cover the high points. So, our goal was to hit the media, the fiftieth growth percentile in ELA and math for grades four through eight, or more. And the idea behind that is that collectively, if we're hitting it in every grade, then we should in theory hit it on our School Performance Framework if every grade is doing that. And so, we're excited to share that fourth grade and eighth grade in Language Arts did accomplish that goal. The fourth grade was at the sixty-fourth percentile, and eighth grade at the, or eighth grade's at the fifty-fourth, and fourth grade's at the sixty-fourth. And then, in math, we also saw that. Fourth grade was at the sixty-ninth percentile. Note that fourth grade scored second in the district for their median growth percentile in both math and language arts, which was really cool to see. And then seventh grade was at the fifty-first, and eighth grade was at the fifty-fourth. And eighth grade came in second overall in the district for their growth in math, and then seventh grade was fourth in the district for their growth in math, which was really, really nice. And what's really encouraging about this is that this is the first step to seeing those achievement, that achievement start to grow for us, because the more our kids are growing, the more that they're actually attaining that meet standard over time. So, you'll see as we go through an achievement, you can see, we look, looking at the cohort of kids, you'll notice that between grades three and four in English Language Arts, eleven percent, we grew the number of kids who are meeting the standard by eleven percent in that grade. So, that took the growth percentile, we go back to that, the sixty-fourth percentile, and that resulted in eleven percent achievement gains. And so, that's why we're targeting fiftieth or better. Ideally, we want to see growth percentiles in the sixties and the seventies, because that tells us that we're closing the gap for kids. And then as we look to four, four to five, we saw one point seven percent, so less growth there. But six to seven, seven and a half percent, and seven to eight, one, one point five percent. And then when we go into math, we had some great celebrations. You know, three to four was three point seven percent, four to five was four point seven, and then six to seven was six and a half percent, seven to eight was ten point three percent. So, you know, that's exciting to see that these growth percentiles that you look back at over here are starting to contribute to increased percentages of students who are meeting the standard.
Hey Jen, would it be a fair takeaway to say that every grade level increased last year instead of decreased?
Ooh, let me double check that, because I think what, what we're missing here is one of the points that we do need to work on is that fifth to sixth grade, that fifth to sixth grade transition, because they are not listed on here as an increase, so it's, it's almost there.
I see, okay, so every grade or every transition other than fifth to sixth increased?
Correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And then, this is non-cohort data, so these are, when you look up our CMAS scores for twenty-twenty-five, you're, and you look at twenty-twenty-five compared to twenty-twenty-four, remember, those are different groups of kids. So, this data is just showing us this year what the increase was compared to last year. But it doesn't take into account, because you're comparing different groups of kids, where those kids started and where they ended. The previous slide shows where they started and where they ended for those kids who took the test both years. In this situation, we're just looking at how did we do in each grade this year compared to how we did in each grade last year. And what we want to see on this slide is if our systems are getting better, we want to see this number in third grade continue to go up. Because the stronger our K-two in third grade instructional program is, the more kids should be coming in scoring more proficient on CMAS in third grade. And it will show that our system is actually lifting, and that's what we want to see. And so, this is encouraging to see the six percent gain for third grade here in Language Arts and four point seven percent for third grade in math. The rest of these, you can see that the percentages also went up, just know that they're different groups of kids. So I love looking at the cohort data, because I love to see how did that group of kids get better over time. And this one's more, how are we, how are the kids doing in general this year? So, you know...
Good night, and a good trip. Teresa has a question. As we see changes in teachers from one year to the next, how are we ensuring that we have continuity in learning and also continue the trajection, the traction trend we are seeing? Sorry, I'm just reading.
So, we continue to work on having really strong onboarding programs for our teachers, and so they do participate in an induction program. And then this year, we're also continuing to strengthen and support our instructional coaches as they're working with teachers to help grow their, grow their craft and ensure that they're on-boarded well. And we also continue to work on having, you know, not only attracting great teachers to our system, but also retaining teachers that are doing a great job and keeping them with our kids. And so, those are kind of some high-level pieces that we work on. And I don't know if you want to ask Teresa if that answers her question?
She says thank you.
Yes, it does.
Okay, cool.
And so, some opportunities that we see, you know, for achievement is that we really want to continue to strive to meet or exceed the district average in all grades and contents with the long-term goal meeting or exceeding the state average. So, please note too, that when we see the district average, Bromley East and all other charter schools are also included in that district average. So the better the district gets, the better all the other charter schools get, the stronger that average becomes, which is good. So it's a good target to chase. And then, we also want to be looking for growth in Language Arts in fifth and sixth grade. Um, and then, um, we also want to be looking for growth in Language Arts, um, in fifth and sixth grade and math in sixth grade. Want to see those, uh, percentiles increase?
Quick question on all that real quick?
Yeah.
So the overall goal is to see every grade level above 50%, the 50th percentile, right?
Yep.
So we've got some work to go to get there. So being realistic about it, what kind of timeline do you and your team see that that could take? I mean, I, I get, it's a guess, you know? But realistically, it doesn't happen overnight. So is that like a one-year, three-year, five-year that you see that could realistically happen?
I mean, that's a, that's a great question. I mean, I'm trying to think, like, we saw a good number of grade levels start to hit it after one year of chasing it. We're in our second year now. I mean, it's, I mean, maybe it's possible that we could see that. I would like to see increase to almost everybody. You know, the goal's still the same, right? Like,
Absolutely.
Do I think we might be able to get there after this year? I'm hopeful that we can do that. Um, if not, I would really hope by the end of next year because that would be that we're rocking and rolling and meeting kids' needs where they're at. I would, I would love to see that. I mean, I know our teachers are super capable of it. Um, our work this year focusing on assess, formative assessment, responding in real time, how are our kids doing? What do they need? How are they? That's, I think that's really going to push that attention to how to help our kids close the gap. And then we've also on boarded, um, a couple tier, tier two targeted intervention programs. So, um, we adopted 95% group this year that we're trying for literacy. Um, and it includes a diagnostic assessment and then also some really clear, explicit, um, lessons that, um, teachers can do with students who are, um, kind of lower in those skills to help close the gap for those students in those small groups that they do. After their universal instruction, they see some students again for off-grade level skills and they'll work on those skills with those students in a separate group. And these resources, um, we're going to start using this year to really help target and hone those things in. Now you can't close a tier one problem with a tier two targeted intervention. So we still have to continue to deliver, to deliver, uh, first best instruction really well. Um, but that, but running that tier two alongside that will help make sure that kids aren't going grade to grade with skills gaps. So that should be helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. So then the School Performance Framework, um, our goal this year was to obtain 53% or more of the points to move from improvement to performance. And we got really, really about as close as you can get before, uh, you tip that scale. So we came in at 52 and a half percent of the total points. So we will spend this year, uh, our rating for this past year was improvement. Um, but we are half a percentage point away from that goal. So I think that, um, in some ways, you know, we had conversation about what would it have felt like if you were at 53% or 53 and a half percent? Like, how would that affect your mentality versus at being at 52 and a half percent where you're like, oh my gosh, like, we really made some strong efforts last year? And we're so close. Like, that feels a little bit better than, oh my gosh, we barely, you know, we just made it, you know? So we're, we're thinking, we're excited, um, for the opportunity to continue the work that we started last year and eager to chase that 53% of the total points. So we're well on our way. Um, and these slides kind of show some of the changes that you'll see. And one of the things that when you look at the School Performance Framework, all that CMASS data, when you look at the data by grade level and the growth data by grade level, all of that stuff starts to get blended together in the School Performance Framework. And they look at how did elementary perform? How did middle school perform? And then those two, two, um, point totals. So you see 55.2 and 50.2, those are merged together to give us our entire School Performance Framework. So lot, there's lots of blending in the School Performance Framework. And so, but what I'm excited to share is that, you know, elementary last year was rated as improvement at 49.7% of the points. And this year moved to performance at 55.2% of the points. So that's exciting. Middle school went from priority improvement at 40.8% of the points to improvement at 50.2% of the points, which was a huge uh, growth for them in middle school. And I'm excited to see that continue this year. And so let's say that middle school, elementary is able to maintain their total percentage of the points and middle school is able to make that same type of a jump. That's a solid, um, pathway into performance. So that's pretty cool.
Um, Jen, we had a question that came through from Therese. She wants to know if you're able to tell um, with this data, if we increased reading by, say, 2% over last year or decreased reading deficiencies by 1% year after year?
This summary will probably not tell us that, but I can absolutely follow up with that question, uh, at, at a later date.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Um, so our overall points, um, went from 45.4% of the points last year to 52 and a half percent this year. Um, academic achievement went up from 43.8% of the points to 44.6% of the points. And then academic growth went from 46 and a half percent of the points to 57.9% of the points. So definitely focusing on growth has, um, a lot of benefits. And as you know, academic growth is 60% of the points, uh, used to create the total School Performance Framework. And then when you take a look at, um, the elementary median growth percentile, that increased from, in Language Arts, from 41 to 47 and a half. And remember, that's, um, using students in grades four and five. So as they went from grade three to four and four to five, that group of kiddos who took the test both years is included in that English Language Arts score for elementary. And then for math, you'll, you'll see that, um, the median growth percentile was at 58. And then, um, for middle school, we're seeing the median growth percentile in Language Arts, um, went from 32 to 43. And for math, it went from 35 to 47. So as you're talking about, you know, when are we going to get to 50? We're getting, we're getting close, which is really exciting. Um, some opportunities in the School Performance Framework to dig a little bit deeper is that we noticed that, um, for multilingual learners, their reading improved, but we need to continue and add additional writing support for that group. And that's the super high level overview, but of course, you know, we'll be back talking about this again next month because we have the monitoring report 1A for academic achievement. I'm absolutely happy to answer any questions you guys have. We just kind of wanted to give a general, general overview of some of the pieces that we saw.
Um, Jen, when I'm looking at the School Performance Framework, um, report that we get from 27J, does this number say that we are not meeting the 95% of participation?
Um, so yeah, so I pulled up this, uh, piece right here. So the short answer, there's two answers to this. So one is because we have really great documentation of kids who are opting out, we don't have kids who start the test and don't finish the test, which are things that count against us and our overall school performance rating.
Okay.
So in, in the accountability participation rate, which you see here, it's 98.8, 99.4 because the kids, we tend to get opt-outs early and kids don't start the test. Now, so that doesn't penalize us in terms of accountability participation rating. But the total participation rate of students who took the test out of all the kids who are eligible to take the test and the kids who did was 84.1%. Last year, we were at 88%. Um, obviously both of those numbers are very far behind the expectation, um, that the federal government set when they, they created the, um, was it Every Student Succeeds Act, in which they created accountability testing. That's a part of, of that act. They set the participation rate at the federal government level at 95% which is the same rate that we have for students to attend school. And, um, so you can see here that this other part, um, total participation rate descriptor for planning purposes, we don't meet that 95% ti, percent participation rate. Which, as you start getting fewer and fewer kids participating in the test, the data is less reliable for you to use in terms of making decisions about how effective your system actually is. And so while we saw really great growth in eighth grade, I believe we had between 61 and 63% of those eighth graders take the test, which is the lowest I've ever seen since I've been here. And this is my eighth year. So I would say that, that was, and, and we saw participation rates decline. And in general, people did. Other schools might have participation rates in the 90s, which is great because then that tells us, you know, we can really look at that data and go, yeah, pretty much all of our kids took the test. We really understand where we are. Um, but if we have a good number of kids who opt out of the test, it's hard for us to really say like, yeah, this is, this, these efforts are really working or not working. Of course, we have our own internal measures that we use, but those internal measures are not a part of our, um, report card. And so we might know internally that things are going great, but nobody, you know, according to the test in the school report card, it might not look that way.
So I, you probably don't have this data, but I'm just curious of the, you know, 125, 130 parent excuses. What is the reasoning for that? They probably don't provide that, right? They just opt out?
Some, we see all kinds of different reasons for that. So some provide a reason, some don't provide a reason. Um, some, I don't know. I mean, I'd be curious to learn a little bit more from parents. We, we really tried to increase our communications about CMASS last year in an effort to inform people about the purpose of the test, how we use the data. Um, and, um, it was interesting to see that um, increasing our communication actually decreased our participation. So, um, I don't know if those two, two things are actually, you know, influencing each other. I don't know. Um, but that was an interesting observation that I made.
Okay. I was just curious because I think, like you said, the, the less data we have, the harder it is for us to get back into that performance. Is that kind of correct?
Um, not, not necessarily. Um.
Well, I mean, at least to track overall growth.
Correct.
You're not tracking the full. If you're only doing 60%, there's 40% of kids that are unaccounted for. We're not really sure where that data lies.
That's right. That's the, that's the scary part is that we are not getting all of the information from our system. And so we really want the data to be reliable. And when you have a big chunk of participants missing from that data, the data is less reliable. So, um, really excited to see the growth numbers that we did in eighth grade, but also know that there's a limiting factor on that because if you have, you know, 61 to 63% of the kids taking the test, well, that's 39, you know, to 37% of the kids who did not. So is that growth number that we see, is it valid? Because we have a huge sample size missing from that data set.
And even the flip side of, you know, how much better could our scores be if those kids were included? You know what I mean? And so I'm, I'm just trying to tie this all together in my mind is all, speaking out loud, I guess, thinking out loud.
Yeah, well, and we want that information. We want to know, you know, we want 95% or more of our kids to take the test because it, it puts us to the test, right? Like, hey, all these kids took it. How did they do? Are you, can you stand behind the results that you're getting? Um, and do we know that the things that we're doing are actually affecting kids positively? Our data suggests that they are. And as the kids get older, the participation declines. So for sure, those elementary results had definitely participation rates at 90%, 92%. You know, those types of things. But then as they get older, it drops below 90%. And then as you can see in eighth grade, um, it definitely fell off this year.
Okay.
Jen, speaking to that, how much does test anxiety play a role, especially as kids get older? And what do some of, especially our middle school teachers do to combat students with very bad test anxiety, which might lead them to asking their parents to opt out?
Sure. I think the way we approach just assessing students in general plays a big factor into how kids anxiety goes with those situations. And so when we present assessing students as an opportunity to learn about how they're doing, we set a comfortable environment. It's a routine part of the way that we instruct our students and give feedback with them. I would imagine for many kids, CMASS doesn't feel so overwhelming because it's, they're used to doing work on that level. They're used to taking assessments like that more routinely throughout the year and they feel comfortable with that. And I think it's all about how people present that. You know, if they're presenting it in a stressful way to kids, like, you know, but I've heard success stories where people say, you know, hey, this is just, you know, giving us some information on how well your teacher did this year. And then kids are like, oh, it's not really about me. It's about my teacher. I like my teacher. I'm, I can take the test at school. I can do that, you know? Um, so I think it's just about how it's framed for kids and how routine this type of testing is for them. Because when we look at, um, the Wonders Program that we've been using, they have week six, which has a multi, multi-day assessment as a part of week six, um, at the end of unit assessment. Those mirror what the kids, the types of tasks kids are going to do on CMASS. And so the, the more familiar they are and the more comfortable they are doing those things routinely throughout the year, the less overwhelming and scary CMASS looks.
Is there like communication for, like if a teacher notices that a student really does have a grasp of the material, but definitely has test anxiety, like, or is that an opportunity for teachers to reach back out to parents to make sure that the parents can talk to the stu, you know, just along the lines of, hey, I'm, I'm seeing that your student is, you know, potentially having some anxiety when it comes to any form of test taking, like, or, you know, are teachers given those tools to be able to open those doors?
I mean, I don't know that we've explicitly told them to, to do that, but I know our teachers are pretty well in tune with students and they have routine communication with parents. And so I would imagine that if they're noticing something like that, they would let parents know, um, how their kids are performing, how it's going for them. Um, I know for sure in elementary that there's probably lots of communication about that. If I'm being honest, I don't know exactly what the communication is like in middle school in terms of, of if teachers are reaching out routinely about type things like that or not. I, I, I can't say that with certainty, so.
And Therese had one question too. Um, will the school be looking into gathering data on why we had such a participation dip last year?
I, I can absolutely consider trying to figure that out. I know the state of Colorado is also trying to figure that out. Um, in terms of why the participation rates are lower. Um, I know that there'll be a participation rate factor in upcoming School Performance Frameworks. Um, and, um, we're all, we're all kind of unsure why that is. Um, nobody, when I was at the case conference this summer, uh, nobody had good, uh, reason as to why that's happening statewide.
When students opt out, are they not required to give a reason for opting out?
They are not, no. Per state law, parents have the right to opt their children out of the test. And then also in addition to that, um, we can neither, you know, we can't incentivize participation in the test or we cannot incentivize kids for performing well on the test. And so really the state is really committed to ensuring that that's generally neutral. So we're trying to communicate how we use the data, how it helps us as a system to know how effective we are. And then of course, that data is then utilized along with access testing, um, which measures our English language learners. Um, that data is combined to create the School Performance Framework.
It might not be like formal data, but do you have parents that come to you or teachers and say explicitly why they're opting their students out?
I mean, I've heard things. I've heard things that like, my friends aren't taking the test, so I don't want to take the test. Um, those are some of the ones I've heard. I, I know that there are people who do have legitimate test anxiety. Other things I could only speculate on. So I, I don't, those are the only two I've heard concretely.
Great. Any other questions, comments on this agenda item? All right. Well, thank you, Jen.
You bet.
Really appreciate your time in, uh, helping educate all of our, our parents and teachers and helping us understand the, the framework. Um, the next agenda item that we have here is our board calendar. So every year we try to build out the calendar. So we have a good idea as to what's happening. Um, this is essentially a rough draft of our calendar for the rest of this year, October, November and December. Um, so please keep in mind, like September 25th, we will have our board work session and we'll cover, um, normally we would be doing a board self-evaluation around this timeframe, but what we're probably going to be doing is building the framework around our board self-evaluation. That was part of our conversation during the retreat. Um, and then we have some trainings that will, um, be required to take this year. We have our board business meeting on October 2nd. Those are some general, um, areas that we'll cover as far as like our academic achievement for monitoring reports. Um, we'll approve the audit around that timeframe. as far as like our academic achievement for monitoring reports. Um, we'll approve the audit around that timeframe as well. Um, and then Bart would so graciously give us the audit report and, uh, the finance dashboard around that timeframe too. Um, for October thirtieth, we, um, normally go around the BEX and twenty-seven J relationship as well as the ED evaluation. And so that's also on our agenda. But in addition to that work session, we'll probably be working on our ED evaluation framework. And on November sixth, that is our board meeting. Um, we'll discuss, um, our charter school authorizer through three J and not monitoring report. And we do try to discuss, um, whether or not there will be, um, incentives for our staff around that timeframe too. We call it holiday bonus, but that's not always what we call it. And then, um, Casby Conference is coming up December eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. So remember to calendar that. And our board meeting on December fourth. Any thoughts, questions, comments, concerns? So far.
I definitely will not be able to go to Casby.
Okay.
I will be on the Disney cruise in the Caribbean.
Ooh, hers is better than me, but I will not be able to vote either. I will be in Las Vegas.
All right. Is it gonna be, uh, me and Mark again this year?
We'll see.
Theresa's on there. Um, yeah, so it's always a great time. Really enjoyed last year being able to, um, we don't make any business decisions during the Casby Conference, but it does give us a really great time to bring our brains and our great minds together after some of the conference topics to see, um, what we're missing and how we can do better, so.
Well, and I think I'll say our strategic plan that we spent the last, what, eight months working on? That was kind of born at Casby. Um, that idea kind of came from one of our sessions and then came to fruition. So I think that's really cool that that came out of that. So, so I'm excited for it. I think it's good.
Cool. All right. So, um, yeah, that's the, the calendar through the end of the year. This, things could be added between now and then. We have up until, um, twenty-four hours before the bor- board meeting to post any of those, um, agenda items. And as always, we look forward to hearing for, from our parents and our teachers about other areas that they would like us to discuss. All right.
I don't know if this will be here. This might be under new business. Um, the only thing I would ask if maybe we can try to fit somewhere in the October, November, some type of a linkage, whether that's, um, you know, some, some type of format, um, doesn't necessarily have to be what we've done in the past, but as we, you know, strategic plan, there is a focus on climate and culture. I think that's a big piece to that and just community engagement. So.
Yeah, Mark, that's really good that you said that. I think during our work sessions, we're really gonna develop our policies and stuff around that. And I think linkage will be connected to a lot of that. So, yeah, we definitely want to get back to, get back to that. All right. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, we can move on to our next agenda item. We'll bring Bart back up here for monitoring report. Uh, executive limitations, three D financial conditions.
Testing. So. Did you plan to bring it up on the screen or do you just want me to, do you have it on your computers? You can follow along or?
Right behind you.
Okay. So this is for the period ending, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Now, as you may know, uh, the audit is being drafted. I know they're working diligently on the audit draft. Um, I'm getting questions about the notes to the financial statements. And so that's underway. Holting and Company is our auditor. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the June thirty results. In terms of our goals, we still have the thirteen goals and, um, each, um, data or metric is going to key off of, uh, those goals. In terms of our, uh, first goal there, expend more funds than have been received in the fiscal year. Now, as you know, um, our fund balance has been growing over the years. And, uh, for this last fiscal year, our fund balance grew by a million eight ninety-three, one seventy-four. So we ended the year, uh, just north of, uh, seven million dollars. Um, in terms of cash, cash came in at about seven point five million. So you can see there's a difference between our ending fund balance and our cash. About four hundred thousand. So just so you kind of put this in context, when we talk about our fund balance, it tends to mirror cash because if you don't have any accounts receivable, and if you don't have any accounts payable, okay, that means if no one owes you money, or if you don't owe anybody money, your cash is gonna equal your fund balance. Okay? So we typically see a higher cash balance than our fund balance at the end of the year. Why is that? Because we usually have a pretty sizable liability at the end of the year. Not as much as it used to be. Why? Because we're not self-insured anymore. So that incurred but not reported reserve doesn't show up on the balance sheet anymore. But we do have to accrue for salaries and benefits. Okay? So that's gonna sit on the books. And of course, at the end of the year, we have accounts payable, you know? Year-end bills that we pay in July for the prior fiscal year. So generally speaking, our cash balance is gonna be higher than our fund balance. All right? So in terms of some of the other metrics, um, we're gonna get into, um, two. So in terms of number one, um, we, uh, report compliance. Um, we definitely grew our fund balance for the year by a million eight. Uh, so, uh, goal number two, borrow from reserves unless directed by the board. So what does borrowing from the reserves mean? Means drawing down fund balance. Okay? Um, we did that a number of years ago when we transferred money to CEC. We're gonna do that for FY twenty-seven. I mean, for FY twenty-six. So that's this fiscal year, the year, the year that we're currently in. Why? Because we're paying down our debt. So even though we're, we'd normally planned to increase fund balance, we're actually drawing down fund balance by about a couple million, about two and a half million dollars. So we'll get to that in a jiffy. But in terms of borrowing from reserves, that didn't happen in FY twenty-five. Okay? So we're in great shape there. Uh, basically, we increased fund balance. You can see there by a million eight ninety-three. So it began the year with about five point two million in fund balance, and it grew to just over seven million dollars. Uh, third metric or third goal, borrow funds from the general fund, which excludes CEC. Borrow funds for the general fund. What does that mean? Take out a loan? Maybe increase credit card balances, that kind of thing? Well, generally speaking, um, unless you have adequate fund balance, you generally can't borrow money. I mean, a school can borrow money, but basically the only way that you can generally do that is if you have a reservation of fund balance, a carve-out. Uh, what would be an example of that? Well, we, we take out loans, so we, we obligate ourselves for like leases. We obligate ourselves for, you know, long-term commitments. And so we can sort of borrow the future, future revenue stream, if you will. But we definitely didn't borrow any money, any new money in, um, FY twenty-five. And we're definitely not gonna borrow any new money in FY twenty-six or FY twenty-seven. Our goal is to actually be debt-free. And so what we're doing, um, effectively this year, FY twenty-six is paying down our debt by just over, um, four million dollars. Okay, so in terms of the fourth goal, allow the general fund balance to fall below Tabor Reserve and the five percent operating reserve. I think this table is great. Kind of, kind of gives you a nutshell, uh, gives you an idea where, what we've been doing. You can see here, we've been growing fund balance consistently um, in anticipation of our refi. Okay? And so this is projected down here in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven. You can see how fund balance is declining for the just over seven million dollars. I think this comes in at like about four and a half. Okay, so you can see there, we're pulling down fund balance by just over, you know, two and a half. Okay, two and a half million. And that's because, you know, July one, we do the refi and we kick out four million dollars. But because we kicked out four million, you think fund balance is gonna go down four and a million? No. Because we've been consistently growing fund balance or generally on a normal year, our revenues exceed our expenses. Like for FY twenty-five, we increased fund balance by a million eight. Okay? So that covers match, uh, goal number four. Um, we definitely um, did not allow fund balance to fall below Tabor Reserve and the five percent operating reserve. So we're in compliance there. Goal number five, uh, admin will not use board-designated long-term reserves. So it's kind of a reiteration of four to a degree. Uh, not using reserves, we're growing fund balance. And so, uh, preliminarily, uh, that's why, because the audit isn't officially complete yet. That's why I say preliminarily, Holting and Company, uh, didn't find any instance of, um, um, using long-term reserves. So that's five. Terms of six, board, uh, admin will not conduct inter-fund transfers unless directed by the board. So we haven't removed any, uh, resources, um, to CEC. However, in FY twenty-six, we are gonna move a lot of resources to CEC. And obviously, that is a directive by the board. Why? Because you guys approved the FY twenty-six appropriating resolution, budget resolution, which clearly showed that we were mo-, uh, spending, you know, additional four million dollars. So how does that work? Well, we gotta move it over to CEC because CEC is on the note, if you will. There, um, so we leased the school from CEC and CEC borrows the money. So we were moving cash from the school over to CEC. And then technically, CEC is paying down the debt. So, um, it's not a shell game.
It's, uh, it's accounting and it's finance.
Can you remind me what, what CEC stands for? Community Education Center.
There you go.
Yeah. All right. So that's number six. Uh, didn't do that, but we're doing that in FY twenty-six. So, uh, seven. Admin will not fail to settle payroll obligations and vendor payables in a timely manner. We make sure we pay all our bills timely. I mean, the great thing is when you're in great financial position, you never have an issue paying your bills. Okay? You never have a challenge paying your bills. Um, we did talk about this in January when we did the three D and, uh, back then about moving to paychecks and, um, uh, away from our old, uh, company, payroll company, ADP. And so it's going really well. I think the system is, we're, you know, kind of getting in a routine. And, uh, obviously, we're continuing to refine that service in terms of what we're paying for and what we're getting charged for and what we're utilizing. So, yeah, it's a working process, process. Um, and so in terms of paying up all our bills on time, um, we can report compliance because we don't have any vendors uh, crashing the phone bank, asking for money. Okay? I guess that's one way to describe it. Uh, admin will not split orders to avoid any parameters, procedures outlined in the financial, financial policies. So what, what are we getting at there? I mean, we have policies and procedures that say, hey, if, um, a planned expense is over X amount, we need additional approvals. So, uh, splitting a, a PO might be making it, uh, several, making several POs at a lower amount to avoid, you know, those types of, that type of scrutiny, if you will. And so we're not doing that. So we report compliance. Admin will not, uh, number ten, acquire encumbered lease or dispose of any real property. Um, we had no instances in FY twenty-five, nor planned any instances for land acquisition or whatnot in the future. So we report compliance. Uh, admin will not accept revenues from sources not in fact appearance consistent with admission value. Um, this is written into our financial policies and we're following all those policies. And so I report compliance there. Admin will not fail to aggressively pursue material receivables after a reasonable grace period. So generally speaking, in terms of the balance sheet, receivables clear out on a re- uh, recurring basis. We don't really, uh, haven't really had any situation where we've had uh, ongoing receivables outstanding when, in the normal course of business, which might be thirty to sixty days. Uh, way back when we used to run a preschool program, I know, uh, and, you know, charge tuition for stuff. Uh, we may have had some, um, folks that we set up a payment plan for and they paid over time, but we don't have anything outstanding at this time. So we report compliance. And then the last goal, operate without adequate internal controls over receipts and disbursements. I think we're very tight on our internal controls, uh, have a lot of eyes on the prize, so to speak. Uh, obviously, Jen authorizes things. I look at stuff. Sam is, um, looking at stuff. So, and we have external auditors that look at our stuff. So we're getting a lot of eyes on the, on the transactions. So, um, we report compliance there. And then lastly, uh, obviously, we're, you know, audit field work is, uh, complete. And, um, draft, we should see that shortly. And, uh, the audit report, uh, should be complete, uh, shortly thereafter. So that's all gonna be happening this month. So, yeah, things are going well. All right. Any thoughts on all that? It's a lot of stuff.
I don't think so, Mark.
Okay.
You're always very thorough, so I love it.
I try to be. But make sure you stop me if there's ever a question, so I can dive into the deets. Um, let's hit the dashboard real quick. Uh, great information here. So Jen, if you want to go to the individual sheets, there's individual tabs on that dashboard. And so, uh, you can hit one sheet at a time, which might be easier to navigate. Oh, okay, we can do it that way. That's, that's all good. So I'm just gonna hit a couple of highlights here. And so with regard to, um, this slide, um, the data points aren't there, so I will read them. Um, in terms of, uh, FY twenty-five, um, so this column right here is expense. This is total revenue. This is PPR. Okay? And so total expense here, her student came in at twelve thousand five twenty-one. Total revenue here, that's all revenue, general fund revenue, came in at fourteen thousand oh eighty. And then total, uh, PPR, that's our per pupil revenue, sent by state of Colorado that consists of property tax, state share, and uh, specific ownership tax that came in at eleven thousand two fifty-seven. So year over year, in terms of prior year, our, um, PPR grew by about seven percent. Total revenue grew by about eight percent, and expenses grew by about six point three percent. So as long as your revenues are growing faster than your expenses, or you have some equivalency there, you're always gonna be in good shape and give rise to, uh, savings. You, whenever you operate, I mean, if you want to look at running the school like a business. it's always a good idea to make sure that you're spending less than you're making. So that's all, I'll hit on that. Let's go to this guy right here. Okay, so this is the makeup of our revenue. You can see this right here is P P R, per pupil revenue. We got mill every revenue here. And so in terms of the makeup of the entirety here, P P R runs about eighty percent, currently running eighty percent. And then we got about another ten percent on mill levy. So ninety percent of our money is basically funded by the state and then our local share, another ten percent. And this is basically the remainder is interest earnings, our interest earnings. Am I boring you to tears over there, Jen? That's okay. You've been on the road, you've been on the road, right? Anyway, uh, like interest earnings, like record year, this last year, three hundred and thirty thousand. But keep in mind that interest rates have been higher than they have been historically. And we've been saving to pay down our debt, so a couple of impacts there. We can go to the next, if you'd like. And so this, um, so again, no data points there, but we'll just pull this up. That's okay. That's okay. So the only thing I'm just going to point out here is basically, these are expenditures, okay? And you can see our trend line here, we continue to spend more money because obviously we, our revenue is increasing and, uh, basically, we need to pass on raises and costs of everything to conduct business continue to increase. You can see here that we have instruction versus support. You always want your instructional expense line item to be higher than your support, okay? You always want more money going into your classroom for teachers and things utilized in the classroom to delivery, to deliver the product, okay? Then your support expenses, which is this purple line, okay? We had a little uptick here. What happened here in the last fiscal year? Well, we had some additional capital expense. So we had a couple of projects related to the building and some other infrastructure things that went happened. And so that's why we had a little bit of a spike. And so we'll get back to some normalcy here, probably even see us, uh, another spike in F Y twenty-six. Why? Well, we're transferring out all that dollars. When you transfer money out, that's considered an expense. We see another spike up there, but in twenty-seven on out, we might see some more normalcy and consistency with our instructional expenses exceeding our support and occupancy. All right, that's all I wanted to say about that. And then, um, we can go to that fund balance slide if you want to do that. Okay, liquidity and reserves. And you can see, you know, what we've been doing here and that's hitting that just over that seven million. Okay? And, um, in terms of other reserves, um, here's our Tabor fairly consistent. I think that came in at five hundred, four thousand. And, um, so yeah, um, this is essentially, let me grab my sheet here. All right. So basically unrestricted fund balance is right in here, this guy. And, um, the thing is, is that, um, when we look at fund balance, you really have to, um, kind of tease out, uh, what it is that you're doing operationally. And we have been intentionally growing fund balance for the refi. And so that's why we see this increase here. But as we now are in a position to start switching gears, what are we going to be doing? Well, we're looking at the playgrounds, right? And now we're back to capital improvements. I mean, obviously, our other big expense salary and benefits, but we've worked really hard to make sure that we're competitive from a compensation standpoint with all the work that Jen and the team have done and engaging a compensation specialist, um, to help us on that front. So, yeah. So I think all the pieces are working, you know, from a financial front, so, um, any thoughts on the dashboard?
Um, I do have a question just because it's stuck out at me. And that was, I'm not really sure. It's the graph that shows the tuition fees donation interest. I just saw that there was like a dip and then a climb, that one right there.
This guy right here?
Yeah.
Let's take a look, can you pull it up just a skosh? So you're looking at these numbers right here, what are you looking at?
Yeah, so under the tuition fees donation interest, looks like there was like a huge dip in F Y twenty, twenty-one. It was like seventeen thousand three seventy-three, dropped down to fifteen thousand one fifty-nine and then started going up again. So I was just curious about those numbers there.
Okay. So generally speaking, we got, um, P P R, mill levies, state and federal grants, and then we've got a kind of a catch-all. And then other we tend to utilize for like, you know, other unusual type items, okay? So the thing is, is that we have interest in here. Think about what was going on in the interest rate environment in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I mean,
Yeah, okay.
People were refi-ing at two and a quarter percent.
Yeah.
When you talk to your bank, they're only paying two tenths of one percent on your savings account.
Yeah, right, okay.
What's happening over here? We're getting at least, you know, four point three, four point four percent on our savings. That's why you see a pop here, but it was a, you know, a ramp up for sure. And if this is twenty-three, twenty-four, is we're not, yeah. So you can see how that popped to four forty-seven, because we had three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in interest this last year. So yeah, that's a great question.
Thank you.
All right, so this is the last little doodad I want to share with you.
Doodad?
Covenants, very exciting stuff. Jiffy doodad, love the terminology. So covenant calcs. So we have debt, so we have covenants that we have to follow. And this is basically a summary, year-over-year summary of our covenant calcs. What are the big covenant calcs? Well, one is debt service coverage ratio. And we're required to have one point one times and we came in at a two sixty-four, okay? So we're well beyond, uh, the requirement. Actually, we slaughtered it. And so, uh, and then the other one is days of cash on hand. And we're required to keep seventy-five and we came in at one seventy-nine. And so that's about six months of savings, okay? And so you can see the breakdown of the various reserves we have, Tabor, five hundred, four thousand, sped reserve, one sixty-eight, prepaid and deposits. Why is that a reserve? Well, we pay for that stuff in advance. So like if we pay for future services as of the end of the accounting period, we show there's a prepaid expense because we haven't received those services or goods yet, okay? And then, um, so you can see down there at the very bottom, that last number in that, uh, twenty twenty-five column, we got an unreserved unrestricted, okay? A million two forty-four. So you can see after paying that four point two million, after kicking out that four point two, we don't have a lot of discretionary fund balance left, a million two. So I think we hit it right on the mark in terms of our plan of attack. So yeah, that all worked out really nice. So that's kind of gives you a, um, a recap of the covenant calcs that we have to follow. All right, you guys have any thoughts on all that?
No, in, in all seriousness though, I mean, um, thank you for what, what you do for this school. I mean, all this stuff, at the end of the day, benefits our, our kids and our stakeholders, um, and that's the goal. I mean, I think it would be, uh, okay to say that this isn't normal for, for schools, right? To be, to set themselves up in these kinds of positions. And I know that's you and Jen and the finance committee, everybody doing that, so just kudos, hats off to you guys. So it's a big, big to do.
Thank you, Mark. I can't wait for the day in approximately ten years where we have this million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand come back into the operating budget. And we're not talking about giving everybody a big massive raise. We're talking about being able to really do something inside the classroom. I mean materially, yep. Okay.
What could be happening in ten years?
I think Bart can make it happen, maybe he can make it happen.
Appreciate the confidence.
Thank you so much, Bart.
You're very welcome. Just have a great rest of your meeting.
All right, moving on to our, um, monitoring report, three point O, the commitment to, it was named commitment to academic excellence, but it's supposed to be board global objectives. So hand it over to Jen.
All right, well, some of this intersects with some of the things that, um, Bart already shared, because it covers a little bit about our audit and the requirement to make sure that we're operating, um, within the, the bounds of the law as well as, um, making sure that we complete our audit every year. As Bart mentioned, that we're not aware of any, um, legal or ethical, um, issues going on right now. We do not have any formal complaints asserting that Bex has violated any law. And then, um, we do conduct our annual trainings. I'm sorry, I'm not following along on the digital version here, so I'll just kind of go back to that. But essentially, this, um, monitoring report is about not causing or allowing any practice, activity, decision or organizational practice that is unlawful, imprudent, or in violation of commonly accepted business and professional ethics and practices. Um, and so throughout this, um, we can, I report compliance for all the measures, um, but make sure that we're also, um, following all legal requirements for financial management and accountability, which we heard lots about tonight. The audit. Um, and then, um, as we go down, um, we make sure that we provide adequate employee training related to the prevention, investigation and remediation of unacceptable employee conduct. Um, we have commonly accepted business and professional ethics and practices. There have been no claims or grievances filed centered on ethics or professional practices during this reporting period. And we maintain our employee handbook and policies to ensure that we are, um, up to date, including board policies. Our employee handbook is reviewed every year by our attorney. Um, and then we make sure that we're up to date on all current legislation. And then, um, we have a sustainable prudent financial management practices, um, effective board governance and strong collaboration with the school district. Our, and our financial audit draft, um, was, uh, shared with no findings. Actually, the final was shared and accepted by the board, um, October third, twenty twenty-four, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then the draft audit is coming out here next month. Fire park plans.
Any questions related to that monitoring report? All right. Thank you so much, Jen, for putting that together for us. Um, we have no executive session today, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which is our first and only action item for the day. So Bart presented to us the investment schedule and it was advised that the, um, board make a vote on the improvement of that investment schedule. So at this time, do I have a motion on the table?
Director Stickle motions to approve the investment schedule as presented.
Directors Alvar will second.
It just came up. I was waiting.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the next agenda item is the new business. Um, Mark, I take note of your linkage, um, and we'll carry that discussion on to the next meeting and likely our, um, board work session. Any other, um, items for discussion?
I think the only thing I would throw on there is we briefly touched on it at our retreat, was just the recruitment piece, uh, for that community member.
Okay, any other items for discussion? Okay. We will move to our last and final agenda, which is adjournment, do I have a motion on the table?
Director Stickle will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven fourteen P M.
Directors Alvar will second.
I'm telling you, sometimes it doesn't come through fast.
Maybe she hit end.
I just messaged her to see. Is she going to abstain? I just messaged her, I'm like, are you abstaining?
I know, I did. All right, motion carries. Director O'Hare calls this meeting to end at seven fourteen P M on September fourth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you all.